We'd like to call the meeting to order. It's our regular meeting, April 13th, 2023. Can we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, on our nation, under God, indivisible, with all its rights and to serve.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. I would like to ask for approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions at this time? Seeing none, the agenda is approved as presented. Approval 3.2, approval of the minutes. Can I have a recommendation, please? Mrs. Haynes?
Resolve that Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the following minutes: March 2nd, 2023, special meeting, facilities and finance; March 9th, 2023, regular minutes; April 4th, 2023, special minutes; April 12th, 2023, special minutes workshop.
May I have a second, please? Mrs. Anderson? Mrs. Anderson, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Chahorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to proclamations and presentations, 4.1, Autism Acceptance Month. May I have a recommendation?
Recommendation: Whereas autism spectrum disorder is the fastest growing developmental disability in the United States affecting more than five million people, and whereas autism is a neurodevelopmental disorder characterized by impaired communication and social skills, repetitive behaviors, and restricted interests that can affect anyone, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background; and whereas the symptoms and severity of autism are highly variable and can result in significant lifelong challenges for those affected, impacting how they communicate, learn, behave, and interact with others; and whereas, as the effort to address autism continues, physicians, therapists, and educators can help support individuals with autism by providing early diagnosis and intervention, appropriate education and therapy vital to future growth and development; and whereas, it is important that people living with autism have access to lifelong care and services needed to pursue personal happiness, independence, and community inclusion to achieve their greatest potential; and whereas, much more can be done to assist individuals with autism as they look toward employment opportunities and careers that match their interests and strengths, including efforts from state agencies and partner groups, vocational training programs, individualized support services, and strong advocacy and outreach strategies; and whereas, Royal Oak Schools is honored to take part in the annual observance of Autism Acceptance Month in the hope that it will lead to a better understanding and awareness of this disorder. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby proclaims April 2023 as Autism Acceptance Month.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please, Mr. Chahorsky? May I have a roll call, Mrs. Anderson?
Trustee Chahorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. 4.2, National Arab American Heritage Month. Mr. Chahorsky?
Whereas for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society: in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military service, culture; and whereas, since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends while also setting fine examples of model citizens and public servants; and whereas, they brought with them to America their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity and faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy; and whereas, Arab Americans have also enriched our society by sharing the entrepreneurial American spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous; and whereas, the history of Arab Americans in the U.S. remains neglected and defaced by misconceptions, bigotry, and anti-Arab hate in the forms of crimes and speech; and whereas, Arab American issues such as civil rights abuses, harmful stereotyping, and bullying must be combated in the forms of education and awareness; whereas, they join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society, which every individual is treated equally and feels safe; and whereas, the incredible contributions and heritage of Arab Americans have helped us build a better nation; and now, therefore, be it resolved, we announce that the Arab American Foundation celebrates the contributions of Arab Americans have made to society and does hereby declare April 2023 to be National Arab American Heritage Month by the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education. We encourage our citizens to join us in this special observance.
Thank you, Mr. Chahorsky. May I have a second? Mrs. Anderson? Mrs. Alexander? I'm looking at Mrs. Alexander. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Chahorsky?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. 4.3, Environmental Awareness Month and Earth Day. Can I have a recommendation, Mrs. Anderson?
Whereas together, we can overcome environmental challenges and leave our future generations with cleaner air and water and a healthier environment; and whereas, since April 22nd, 1970, Earth Day has been celebrated annually across the globe to confront our most pressing environmental issues and to unite around a shared mission of protecting the environment we live in and providing our future generations with a safe and sustainable future; and whereas, Earth Day is a valuable opportunity to renew our commitment to preserving and protecting our earth through community service, responsible stewardship, and daily practices; and whereas, although we have made some progress over the years, the global community still faces challenges including climate change, environmental destruction, deforestation, and air and water pollution; and whereas, each and every one of us can contribute to protecting and preserving the planet we share through individual acts such as making our next meal plant-based, using reusable bags, and reducing plastic waste; and whereas, at a community level, we can adapt education systems to enhance climate and environmental literacy, advocate for climate change at our schools and workplaces, and volunteer at local environmental organizations; and whereas, during this week, and especially on Earth Day, we should appreciate the planet we live on, recognize the many environmental issues we are facing, and recommit ourselves to doing our part to invest in our planet as this year's Earth Day theme calls for. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby proclaim April 2023 as Environmental Awareness Month and April 22nd, 2023, as Earth Day in Michigan.
Thank you. May I have a second? Mrs. Haynes? Mrs. Anderson, can I have a roll call?
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Chahorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. At this point, Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Sure. Thank you very much. Well, first of all, thank you to our Board of Ed for those three recommendations for this evening. They are all very important and certainly to us, our students with autism, recognize this month and our acceptance this month, but all year long through our great programs, our special educators, and all our educators in the classrooms that support those students. And also, with regard to the Earth Day and Earth Month, I know there's many special events that our students are planning in the schools, around their own school, as well as helping in the community. A lot of park cleanups coming up in Royal Oak, and so I thank our students who take part in that on a regular basis. So, April is the month, and we are now starting to celebrate all of the great things going on in our district. Our district newsletter has a lot of information, as does our website, so if you don't follow that at home or read our newsletter, please do. But we have many special things to bring to the board's attention tonight and also recognize some very special people. So, at this time, I'll call up our Director of Athletics and Activities, Mr. Brian Gordon, who's going to introduce our Unified Sports Program and team members.
Well, good evening, everybody, and certainly congratulations on the new months of Earth Day. We have our football program who will be helping clean Lions, the Lions Club Park, next weekend. Coach Campbell's got those kids organized, ready to help out, and I think that that's a great thing, giving back to the community. We are fortunate to live and work in a community that supports inclusion. Unified sports is truly an example of exactly that. As the Director of Athletics and Activities for the district, I get to witness every day how inclusion is exercised in our department, in athletics, and with our activities. Something else that I get to do is that I get to serve as the liaison to the MHSAA for Unified Sports through Michigan Special Olympics. It's arguably the greatest thing that I've ever been associated with in my 33 years of being involved in athletics here in Michigan. So, I get to travel the state to spread the word, which is, I'm telling you, is the most amazing thing that you will ever see. And today, we have our team here. Our team is not only a basketball team, but many of these kids are also a soccer team. They bring joy to our school. They create and enhance culture to the finest, and it's led by our coaching staff. So, a little bit about Unified Sports, for those who don't know anything about it. So, basketball is one of the first things that most schools will start with. Royal Oak has taken it to another level. But basketball, so if you're familiar with basketball, five people on the court. We have three special needs kids, and then we have two partners who work together. And our league, the OAA, is committed to having, we had, I think, 13 teams this past year in the OAA, and they play a league schedule just like all of our other basketball teams. And so, if you come to Royal Oak High School for what we would call a triple header, which would be freshman, JV, and varsity, you may be treated to a unified game. And if you do get that opportunity to see these kids play, I challenge you to do it without shedding a tear, because every time that I talk about this, I get choked up, because it is truly the purest form of sport. These kids get to celebrate. They play the game the right way. They compete right down to the last second. They cheer for each other. They cheer for the other team. And everybody in the stands does the same. This is the only sport, and Pam Moore is here, who works in our office, actually, I think, she is the office. She will tell you that, watching this, this is the only sport where an official is not yelled at for making a bad call. The only time there's ever, where people will be upset with the official is if they make a call. So, we did have somebody called traveling. So, recently, this past year, we received a pretty prestigious award. We are a champion unified school. Let's give it up for that. This does not happen out of sheer coincidence, truly not. Our district, I thank the board for supporting this, and I call it the inclusion invasion. I thank our coaches. Things don't happen without leaders. Our three coaches truly advocate for these kids in the hallways, advocate for these kids on the court, and on the field, as Elizabeth started a soccer team this past fall. These kids have had the opportunity to play at Little Caesar's Arena. I don't think any other Royal Oak team has had that chance. This team's had the opportunity to play at the state basketball finals at the Breslin Center. I don't think we have another team that's had that opportunity. These people have done such amazing things and put Royal Oak Community Schools, Royal Oak School District, in the limelight in so many different ways. There are families who get an opportunity to sit in the stands and cheer them on. They wear varsity coats as they walk down the hallway, as everybody is cheering with them. So, I'm going to bring up, I'll call us our fearless leader, and certainly not to discredit our assistant coaches, but Jim Hutton has truly been the man. He has truly been the man. He fights for these kids. He makes sure that they get the opportunities that every kid gets. And so, Jim, come on up and introduce your people.
As I was putting this thought together, and Brian asked us to speak, I kind of wanted to share a little bit more by looking at some of the experiences the students are going to take beyond the classroom. What do they take this when they go into the workforce or when they go past the field and they go past the court? And so, I have a few students that are actually going to maybe speak for a moment. One is going to be a future educator, and so I thought she'd kind of share that experience of what the court kind of took and where that's going to go future from there. And then, another, one of our athletes, Grant's going to share, and then I have one that's playing tennis right now, but if she can get here, we're going to try to get her. You know, there's a lot of kids that play multiple sports. We have a lot of varsity athletes that are, they come join us, whether it's football, or if it's tennis, or soccer, or baseball, or track. And Jane also, like, there was all sorts of different sports that come in, but they kind of center on that basketball also, and also grab the soccer. So, I'm going to start out with just bringing up Natalie for a moment, and she is going to share, is one of our senior athletes that has been with us for two years now.
Hello, my name is Natalie Pichek. I'm currently a senior at Royal Oak High School, and at ROHS, I'm involved in our Link's Peer-to-Peer Mentoring Program, Unified Basketball, as well as a part of their Student Representative Council as the Diversity Coordinator, working to make our school more inclusive. And I was also recently named a National Gold Award Girl Scout for my work with inclusion and disability advocacy in our school district. All of these programs have helped me and my family become more educated on disabilities and the programs that disabled people can be a part of, not only across the country, but the world. I'd like to start off by sharing a quote by late international disability advocate, Jewish Human. "Change never happens at the pace we think it should. It happens over years of people joining together, strategizing, sharing, and pulling all the levers they possibly can. Gradually, excruciatingly, slowly, things start to happen, and suddenly, something out of the blue, something will tip." This quote resonates with me because a lot has happened this year with our unified team. We were named a Unified School of Inclusion by Special Olympics, and we are also recognized by State Representative Helena Scott for our work in advocacy and disability inclusion. Being a part of Unified Sports at ROHS for the past two years have helped me with my leadership experiences, as well as my advocacy work through my Gold Award and my senior project. I have been able to make amazing connections, not only with our athletes, partners, but also our staff and our community. These are things that will last a lifetime, and I am truly grateful to be a part of this amazing program. I'd like to close out by saying that there are over 1.3 billion people in the world who have a disability. Out of those 1.3 billion people, there are about 5 million worldwide that participate in Special Olympics, and about 1.2 million that participate in Unified Sports around the world. Disabled people in disability history are still marginalized in our society today, but through the work of Special Olympics, Unified Sports, and other organizations, we can be the change in our society to how we view disabilities. Thank you.
And then I had one of our athletes, Grant Hatterman, freshman player. Come on up here, Grant. Grant's been excited to play. Go ahead and share your experience.
I've been playing basketball with my team. I've been playing with my friends that I know on my team. I have to help my friend, Marshall. He's a really nice person that I met. He has me on text, so we can like, I can like, use my friendship to help him in classes, not make him run in the hallway, so I can help him in one of my classes on homework, and I can like, help him. For my basketball, I played for, I played with my team, my unified team. Amy's my best, Amy's the best basketball player on my team also. So, with Marshall and me, I hit my threes every single game. Hi, Mr. Hutton, Mr. Gordon, Mr. Reynolds, and everyone who has been so nice to me. Mr. Hutton is one of the best coaches on my team. I feel like I want, I like to help all my friends, so I can like, figure out what combinations I can do from my basketball team and make the final, like, to the championship round, so I can win our championship round and take our trophy to our house. I'm excited to see my championship end up with a win, with hitting my threes, and I can usually hit my threes from half court. Sometimes I make it, sometimes I miss. Sometimes I get mad if I make it. Sometimes if I miss a half court shot, I get mad. If I miss it from a three, I'm fine. I like to see my friends play. My on the bench, they raise me as a person. And thank you for having me helping my friends.
And just one thing I kind of wanted to touch based on with Grant, like, sharing that information. You can see where there's this aspect beyond where it leaves the court and goes into the classroom, literally, you know, seeing them, their partnership, their behaviors have improved in the hallways, their friendships, the ability, their engagement in the hallways, and the ability of kids to see them is just, they see them and they're like a friend, as opposed to like, who's that kid in the hallway? So, it's kind of broken down those kind of barriers that we kind of really want to see in schools, and it's been a pleasure to have. And one thing I was going to have Grace talk about, Grace Ronan was going to be another speaker, and she's been our student council, and she actually led an entire pep rally, and we had an inclusion game, and there was, I've never seen the school so engaged. Thousand kids actually engaged in a pep rally. They weren't looking the other way. They were actually all watching this. They all had their phones. They all had, with lights going, like a huge concert. They were just excited to watch this game, and everyone was in every single shot. So, I can say it's, for Royal Oak High School, it's definitely changed who we are as a school and broadened the community. So, thank you. I know you introduced all of us. Coach Wright's has been coaching with me for four years, as well as Coach Reynolds, and they've really brought the soccer team on. Do you guys want to mention anything about soccer? It's been a pleasure, kind of, they already learned how to be a team. They kind of brought it so that basketball kind of was a relief, because they had it all kind of organized. The kids knew one another. They, and so created two sports, and hopefully, maybe next year, we can go to three, and so they can play all three seasons, so.
We're not going to limit ourselves, though. Three and beyond.
Three and beyond, okay. I'll leave it at that, but there's lots of Special Olympic sports that are out there. I keep getting emails of different games and opportunities, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Hutton, can I ask you to introduce the students that are here?
Yes. So, I'll start with Grant Hatterman. Want to stand up? And Amy Clegg, Mason Conklin, Sophia Noonan, Natalie Peck, and Jane Barnett.
And I'd have to say, you are correct. I could not watch the game, and I cannot sit here without crying. So, I am so proud of all these kids and so grateful to have the coaches that encourage the kids to participate and to be friends. And yeah, so thank you.
I will tell you, that is the best thing going.
Yeah, I agree.
And I could not make a three-point shot to save my life.
Yeah, he's going to have to teach me that.
So, are there any questions from any of the board members at all?
I don't have a question, but just wanted to say how much I enjoyed seeing the team play when we went out. And what you were talking about before, it was just wonderful. The encouragement for the teammates, the crowd, everybody was rooting for everybody, and it was really a wonderful experience.
It really is. If you, and this is something that is here to stay, and again, I want to thank the Board of Ed Administration, because this is, you know, we have Schedule B, which is all our coaching salaries, right? And so, Royal Oak is committed to this. So, this position as unified coaches is on our Schedule B scale. And to me, like, I always say, put your money where your mouth is when it comes to these programs. And as I'm, you know, talking with HRs around the state and other athletic directors, that's what I tell them. I say, listen, you got to get your district on board, and you got to get them to commit to it, just like they do any other program, because that's exactly what this is. This is as big a part of our athletic program as any other sport. And it's because of the coaches, because kids want to play for somebody. And you hear the way they talk about these folks, and the time that they're dedicated, just like all of our other coaches, that they give to these kids and everything that they get from it. You know, it's invaluable. These are life lessons. And so, again, congratulations to our folks. It's just, I can go on and on and on about that, and I do talk a lot, I know that. So, I'll keep this moving a little bit. We have somebody else that we want to recognize, Jane Barnett, who is also a member of our unified team, but is also the first-ever Royal Oak MHSAA Scholar-Athlete recipient that our school has ever had. Jane, you want to come on up? Now, this is a huge deal. It really is. So, the process for this is that there's roughly 1,500 kids that will apply for this scholarship. And at the Class A level, Division One level, I think there was six males, six females, that received this award. I've been part of the committee that has done this election, and believe me, when you start to read the essays, every single one of these kids are amazing. Like, you just, how do you pick them, right? So, the process that Jane's application, I guess, went through is quite extensive, extremely. And for her and her family to receive this honor representing our community, I won't even say our school, but our community, is simply quite remarkable. She was recently honored at the state basketball finals. I think it was March 23rd, right? She delayed her spring break to go get, to receive her award at the Breslin Center, where they, to quote Leah, her mother, were treated like royalty. So, I'm going to read the excerpt from the MHSAA website. So, this is what they said about Jane, and there's so much more, believe me. Ran four seasons across country, varsity across country, and will compete in her fourth track and field this spring. Also participated, I'm going to say it, Michigan Special Olympics Unified Basketball. Helped cross-country team to the MHSAA finals three times and earned all-league honors in track. Contributed to academic all-state team honors. Served and will serve as captain of both varsities. Serving as senior class secretary, second year as representative officer to the district's Parent-Student-Teachers Association, a third year as an officer of Model UN. Also served on the student council for four years of high school. Played fourth year in Symphony Orchestra and was a principal, how do you say this?
Cellist?
Cellist, okay. That side of my brain is not developed, the music part. Participating in the second year of the National Honor Society, designed and taught weekly lessons to second-grade students as a student buddy program mentor, and will attend, like her father, the University of Michigan in the fall. Let's hear it. Come on. So, you have, your essay is based upon, and typically, it's around sportsmanship of some sort, but this is a quote from Jane's essay. "As a coach's daughter," and believe me, it's not easy to be the coach's kid. "I have had a lifetime of appreciating the joys and the heartaches of sport. Supporting others has taught me to be a better runner and person. Sportsmanship is not only a way to keep the peace, it's the foundation upon which the transformative nature of sports can take place." Ladies and gentlemen, I want to introduce to you one of the coolest kids I've ever been around, Ms. Jane Barnett.
Thank you so much. It is truly such an honor to be here. I'm so grateful for every part of my high school experience. As I talked about in my essay a lot, I couldn't be more grateful for my coaches that allowed me to have such a great experience with my sports and all of the people at my school who allow me to work hard and be able to do the amazing things from unified to cross-country, to the day-to-day that I get to experience at Royal Oak High School. So, thank you so much. So thank you so much, so grateful. Thank you. Yes.
I just want to say, if you guys don't know Jane like I know Jane, she is an amazing young lady and her parents just did great with her. I've watched her, her and my daughter are good friends. And just, she comes in our house and she's just, she's a great kid and you deserve this. And even though you're going to that awful school in Ann Arbor, go green. I just can't wait to see what you do all these years forward, but congratulations, no one deserves it more than you.
Thank you so much.
Well, congratulations, Jane. I'm very excited for you and I know, I know your family is. And so, you've done a good job and we're very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It really is an amazing accomplishment. Doesn't happen every day. And again, I'll say it doesn't happen out of sheer coincidence. It's the support that these kids get, they get it at home, they get it in the community. And it's the programming that everybody is committed to, both in the classroom and outside of the classroom. Our last award, I guess, or our last person that we would, we have the honor to recognize, quite frankly, again, I get emotional on this stuff, is arguably one of the most amazing individuals I have, we have ever had the privilege to work with here in our, in our community. Darren Miller is our boys swim and dive coach. But Darren is so much more than that. Darren has just completed his 37th season here at Royal Oak. First, I think his first season was in 1987. Am I right on that, Darren? And the guy never left, right? He has seen two high schools go to one high school. He coached in the old Don Darrow Pool that had four lanes. You could dive off the board and touch the ceiling. I don't know if Darren could do that when you were there, but not now. But then, back, I think it was 1996, 95 or so, they built that beautiful facility over there. And that is now one of the stops that not only Oakland County this past year, of which Darren hosted the Oakland County meet. Yeah, it's listed as under our Department of Athletics, but we all know that Darren and his team hosted that amazing, huge state or Oakland County tournament. He has had hundreds, thousands of kids that he has influenced in so many different ways. It is very difficult for Darren, not only to go anywhere in this community and not run into somebody, but it's difficult for him to go anywhere because of his involvement in, not only in our community, but also at the state level. He is president of the Michigan Interscholastic Swim Coaches Association, MISCA. He's the president, he runs it, he is the swim guy here in Michigan. He is also president of the Michigan High School Coaches Association. So that's the association for all the sports. That's for swim, football, basketball, everything, athletic directors, the whole thing. He's the guy. Wherever you go, people will often say, hey, hey, you're swim coach, we know who your swim coach is. And it's because of the way he does his craft. It's the way that he treats people, it's the way that he communicates, and it's the way that he honors our student athletes and their families every single season. He is a mentor to all of us and everything that he does, to Pam and I in the athletic office, to other swim coaches, to all coaches. And whenever somebody accomplishes something special in our community, who is the first person to reach out? This guy. He is truly about others. Darren, will you come on up here? So recently, he traveled to Nashville to receive an award. He received from NISC, National Award, the Distinguished Service Award. And essentially, that's for people who do exactly what he's been doing for the last 37 years. Doing things for others. He is truly about not just his own team, but he's about everybody that's in the pool and any opportunity that he gets. And what I love about him is that he is selfless and he is one of those people that is always in the background, making sure that everything is taken care of. Darren, I know I'm rarely lost for words, you can ask anybody, but in this case, I don't, I don't know how to say thank you. I don't know how our community can say thank you to you and certainly the thousands of kids whose lives you have made a difference in. Ladies and gentlemen, our distinguished service guy and every piece that we can think of, Mr. Dylan Miller.
I will be brief. It's quite an honor. Thank you, school board members. Thank you, Superintendent Fitzpatrick. Some thank yous I'd like to do because obviously this is not by myself. I need to thank everyone I've coached with during my career. It's always important to surround yourself with people just smarter than you. I need to thank my wife Kami and our two daughters, who are not here today, for sharing me with the swim world. You know, it's tough during the season, there are no days off during season. I need to thank my swim parents for the last 37 years, both on the boys' side and also on the girls' side. They have handled things and taken care of other things. Because when we host a meet, we do it the Royal Oak way. We take care of the kids that visit our facility. It could be in a dual meet, a championship meet, or county meet. I have to thank my parents. We can't do what we do without our parents. To my swimmers, it's all about them. With no athletes, we're not doing any of this. So thank you to the hundreds and hundreds of boys and girls who have trained with us, worked hard, just to be better. It's always our goal to make faster athletes, but our greater goal is to make better men and women. Something I believe in, banners fade, trophies collect dust, but the relationships you make last a lifetime. I'm a very blessed man. I've been very thankful to have my whole career here with Royal Oak. Long time ago, Jerry Berich and Chuck Jones hired me, a very young coach, and they took a chance. And I've had amazing athletic directors from that time up to now, with Brian Gordon and Pam Moore. And I can honestly say, in all of those years, I have never had a meeting about wins and losses. It's always been about the kids, doing it the right way, and just work hard. So I want to thank all of my athletic directors from then to now, Pam and Brian. Like I said, do the right thing, it's all about the kids. Thank you very much.
I have to say, Mr. Miller, you're a different breed. A team that trains at ungodly hours of the morning.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a different kind of dedication. But I know I've just heard so many positive things over the years, lots of friends that have had children and swim, and their kids love it. So I appreciate all that you've done and all the years that you've devoted to our schools and our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great kids come from great families. Thank you.
Oh, don't go anywhere. What I have to say is, you have made a huge difference in my son's life. My son swam for two years and then decided to go full throttle on running. And it was the hardest decision he made because he's like, well, I don't want to leave, coach. Because even when he wasn't yours, you still checked up on him, congratulated him when he did well. Our kids go to Grand Valley, we ran into him, and it was the highlight of Brian's day to run into you. So you have impacted him in ways we can never say thank you enough for. So thank you.
Thank you, you're very kind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Coach Miller, thank you very much. And I just want to say to Mr. Gordon and then everyone who's here tonight, these last three awards, when you think about it, I'm often asked, what's Royal Oak about? And we're engaging in our long-range plan right now because we want more people to know and we want to communicate better what we're all about. I think we need to show them the clip of the last 40 minutes of this meeting. Because it is what we're about. It's about relationships, it is about the adults that lead our children every day to be wonderful human beings when they grow up and watching them grow up, as many of you have. For our students that help other students, we couldn't say that better because that is who we are. So when you ask about inclusion, you ask about teamwork, you talk about relationships, this is what it's all about. So I just want to thank all of the groups that are being honored right now, the parents. I know the hours it takes behind the scenes as a coach, as a teacher. I don't know when any of you sleep, athletes or coaches or parents, with everything that you listed for everyone. But I am very proud of Royal Oak Schools and this is just another evening that represents that pride that we all have. So thank all of you for all of your work and we are very, very proud of you. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is 4.7. I'd like to call Dr. Parrott up. And we have a special award. We are a community of excellence and we are also surrounded by wonderful community organizations. Several months ago, we were given the opportunity to nominate, if someone wanted to, a VFW Teacher of the Year. And we're very proud that we did have one selected from Royal Oak Schools in Lois Mann. And I'll ask Dr. Parrott to talk a little bit more about the award and this wonderful honoree with us tonight.
Thank you. First of all, it's a very tough act to follow from all you guys, so I appreciate it. And I will definitely keep it brief because Lois will be embarrassed and because Brian took all my time, so. For those who don't know Lois Mann, she has been the foundation of Oak Ridge for many, many years. She was when I was a student there, she was when my kids were students there, and she will probably outlast most of us in this room. So during that time, one of the things that she has done is helped to organize and run our Red, White, and Blue Day, which is now in its 53rd, 53rd year, is that correct? 53rd year of practice. So it's the day where we honor our veterans and our active service people and we have our students parade and sing songs and we recognize all those in attendance. It's something that's near and dear to her heart, it's something that she insists on doing every year and it's something that I promise will never go away as long as I'm here. So it is that, that is the reason why she was nominated for this award and that is the reason why she's here today and that is the reason why she won this award. So I'll turn it over to Lois Mann.
Thank you very much. I just appreciate this honor. And as I told the VFW, it was even more special to me too because I lost my brother in Vietnam. And so, I'm a, you know, a very big supporter of the veterans. And it meant a lot, it means a lot to me, so, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
So I will say, one of the things, Lois is very selfless and she does all the things because she loves them. And on the way up, as we're walking up, she's like, well, how do we follow that? So she was very impressed with everything that you guys had done. And it is a wonderful district to be a part of, so thank you guys.
And I do have to piggyback on to that and I've been able to attend the Red, White, and Blue Day and it's such a beautiful event. And the kids all practice a song together and sing together, honor veterans, honor active service people. And it's just a beautiful event and thank you to Lois for helping keep that going. Thank you. Moving on to 4.8, Dr. Yuanis.
Thank you, I'm just going to readjust to the center table.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, let me move this laptop out of the way. First of all, I do want to thank, I know most of our Unified Student Athletes left and I just wanted to take a moment to thank them. This might be my favorite board meeting ever, watching so many of our former Adams students, not just on the Unified Sports Team, but many other students that are supporting the team. I was nudging Kathy Bell every time an Adams student came up here and spoke, which was almost every time. But, so thank you to that wonderful, our wonderful community and for the coaches for supporting our students. So tonight, we're going to talk about MYKIP. We have Anne Njovu here, our elementary supervisor of elementary curriculum. So we're going to kind of talk a little bit about the Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process. I'm going to slide this over here and we'll just kind of work through the presentation.
So in true K-12 fashion, it is shortened to MYKIP. It's yet another acronym, but it is the, it's all about continuous improvement. So we brought together a few slides just to give you a little bit more of a background into the process and how it's changed a little bit from past school improvement initiatives. There is a list of reasons why MYKIP, but I want to bring attention to the image to the right on the screen, the mindset, the process, and the platform. So there's a couple of different aspects within the mindset. We are, in the past and continuously, we do have heavy academic focus. However, they are, this new process has really encouraged school districts to focus on the whole child, which I'll go into in the next slide. But there's also that mind shift of, from compliance and meeting mandate to really putting in authentic work into the continuous improvement process. So that's why there's mindset there. The process is, and again, I'll go into it in further slides, but it's really looking at our schools and our district as a whole first. Finding what we need, we look at assets, we look at needs, and then we start the process and then take a look at our funding at the end and say, how can we use our funding to support the work that we have set up? And then the last is the platform. MDE, Michigan Department of Education, is very proud of this platform. That is where we enter all of our information. It is a live working platform, so it is not a click, submit, upload a document and then you're done and you can focus on the regular day-to-day work. It is meant to go back in, it is meant to modify and improve. As we look at our goals, we look at what the schools are doing, come back, reconsider, maybe modify, adjust. So those are the three main aspects of MYKIP. Continuous improvement, we were at a session today, our small team from the district was at Oakland Schools. And one of the trainers said, just because school ends by June 30th doesn't mean that the process ends. And that's one thing that I really like about this. It is not an annual goal that we're working toward. We can set goals for multiple years, we can set goals for three months. It really depends on what we identify as needs and the process in which we implement those, the work. As I mentioned, the whole child, we're not just looking at academics. Yes, academics are what we do, but as we know, in Royal Oak, we are so much more than that. Our students are so much more than that. And we're looking beyond state assessment data. We are actually allowed to have three different kinds of goals. An academic goal, a non-academic goal, or a systems goal. So we don't even have to anchor all of the work in big, high-stakes tests. We can look at different measures. And then the last is systems thinking. So as I mentioned, we identify our needs, we identify and enhance our assets, and then we go through the process of a MYKIP team, which is district-level made up of a lot of different stakeholders. And then we work with our school-level improvement teams and it's continually cyclical. We get feedback from the school improvement teams, we meet back- We get feedback from the school improvement teams, we meet back at the district level, and it's constantly being modified. That speaks to the continuous improvement process. This was a slide that the financial consultant at Oakland Schools provided us today and I liked the succinct definition. The MYKIP process is a pathway for districts to improve student outcomes by assessing the whole child needs to develop plans and coordinate funds. So we're moving from that compliance and fund received to identify plans to meet the needs to, we identify the needs, we put plans in place, and then we identify how the funds can provide support through resource, whether it be human, program, whatever it might be. And as I mentioned, MYKIP is focused at the district level, but we're representatives on our team, which is still in the process of growing. We do have a core group of nine people that go to Oakland Schools, but it's going to get bigger and bigger as we bring the work back to our school district. And then once those goals at the district level are set, then we work with our school based and we identify strategies that may not be appropriate for one school versus the other, K-5 versus high school. It depends and it's customized within the context of the larger district level goal. This is the nuts and bolts of the platform. So through the discovery process, we identify data sets that we use. We can use any type of data, perception data that we collect through surveys. We can look at state test scores, local benchmarking scores. We can do interviews. Data is quantitative and qualitative. Then we identify a data story, analyze root cause through five whys, which is identifying root cause analysis. And then we identify a challenge statement. From there, that's when we plan. We manage the goals, manage the strategies that are put into practice at the school level, and then we're constantly monitoring and evaluating. And if at any time those goals seem to not be really meeting our needs, we can reconsider at any time. It's continuous improvement process. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Juanes to talk about what we're actually doing in real time.
Thank you, Ms. Njovu. I've been wanting to say that last name for a while. I only say it when you're not around, but thank you, Mrs. Njovu. I appreciate it. So the main reason why we're excited about this new process, it really moves us away from the compliance mode that we've lived in a lot in education as far as our school improvement process in the past, our district improvement process in the past. The ability to have a district level goal and then have strategies that are going to be fleshed out at the building level is exciting for us. The other part that's exciting for me and I believe all of us, as we start to engage or continue to engage in the long-range planning process, we're definitely seeing a correlation between the long-range planning that we're taking, that's going on right now, and the connection of MYKIP. Similar in the sense that, again, identifying strategies and action plans in our long-range planning, similar to how we're assigning some strategies and goals that we're working through the MYKIP process. Mrs. Njovu spoke a little bit about the team that's been at Oakland Schools. We do have representation from all levels, teachers and administrators, working through this, I believe, four-day or three-day workshop session with Oakland Schools. Part of what we did there, we asked people from all those levels on the committee to bring data, different types of data that we just spoke about here briefly, trying to get a data story or looking at our data and creating a story moving forward as far as the action plan. When we looked at some of the data, we really began to identify some consistency as far as needs across our district. Part of the planning process with Oakland Schools and the MYKIP people there is landing on, landing on a statement or an action plan or an area of inquiry. So through all the data that we looked at and talking to all the teachers and administrators on the committee through all levels, social-emotional learning really is going to be a focus of our goals. Now, we're not really fleshed out the entire goal statement yet, but we were able to through the process that Ms. Njovu spoke about, land on social-emotional learning for students and staff as part of our main goal and focus. Another exciting thing, if you look at the timeline requirements at the bottom there, since we were so compliance-based before, we were always concerned about timing of the goals and putting all the strategies and data. And I know as a building administrator and as a teacher leader, we easily lost track of what we were doing with the goals and visions and just kind of went more on a compliance basis. So for this school year, all we have to do is have one goal in the MYKIP platform and it's managed at the district level. So we're not going to be asking all of our buildings, building administrators and building leadership teams to input their own individual plans and goals, which was really one more hiccup in the past, so that is gone. And then the 23-24 school year, as you can see, we're going to have all active district goals, strategies and activities in the MYKIP platform. So we're getting an opportunity to ease into the process, which is exciting. I feel like we're moving in the right direction, definitely, and I think that we're going to land, we're definitely going to hit that goal for this year and we're going to move forward towards that goal for the 23-24 school year as well. Any questions?
So does the MYKIP process then replace the old school improvement process and/or is it being transitioned? I mean, in other words, are you having to work on both platforms while you get to the next one or are you able to move on from school improvement process to move on to there?
That's a great question. I can tell you're an educator because a lot of our teachers in our districts and our buildings and principals are worried about that same thing. Do we still continue to work in the old model and then work on this new model? We have really been able to pause on that and continue to focus on the MYKIP process. What we did ask from our building leadership teams is to provide us their most recent version of their school improvement plan and goal, which is what you just asked about, which was housed in our previous, I believe, the assist system. So we only have to ask teams to submit their old plans. We've also asked teams to individually at the building level, work through that five whys root analysis and we really took, I mean, we did it today. We reviewed each building's input on the five whys and began to land on social-emotional learning as far as our focus area. So no more on the old system except for just acknowledging that we have that plan. We're totally working in the new platform, which is really just managed at the district level.
The annual education reports are still required, but the assist programs.
Dr. Juanes, could you share how you see this aligning with the current process our district is in, which is looking at long-range planning and kind of setting ourselves up for the future of the district?
That's a great question. Mrs. Fitzpatrick, bringing up a really good point. So what we're seeing is a direct correlation in the MYKIP process, similar in the sense that we did a needs assessment and a long-range planning. We're continuing that needs assessment. We're identifying, we have identified our goal areas. The connection that I realized last night as we had our board workshop is the direct connection in MYKIP, which is referring to our district strategic planning. So there will definitely be a connection. I believe there's also some checkpoints within the MYKIP platform for school districts to continuously look at their district strategic plan and then make sure that there is correlations and connections between. And we're definitely seeing social-emotional learning flesh itself through all aspects of the long-range planning and through the MYKIP process.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports, 5.1, diversity, equity and inclusion. Mrs. Fitzpatrick and Mrs. Martin.
Good evening, everyone. A couple of updates for you this evening. That was a really good segue too because we're going to talk about what we have been doing, what I have been doing with Dr. Juanes and his staff to further some of those goals is working with them and the curriculum department to develop a curriculum plan for a long-range PD for all of our district staff. What we want to be able to say is that all teachers in Royal Oak have had or will have these things and so we're going to develop that. Our goal is to have that, those trainings ready for next fall, at least the first four of them. So we're going to be, again, we want to be able to say that the teachers have had core competencies in these various areas. So we've been working on it in a very similar way to the long-range planning, again, and looking at bringing other areas in and getting the feedback that we're getting from the long-range planning in that way. So we're going to have a similar thing go on where we invite people, teachers, I'm sorry, from every school to come in and help us develop this curriculum. So I'm very excited about it because it's finally getting off the ground. And so we had some good meetings with Dr. Juanes and his team and so I'm excited to get that going. Speaking of professional development, again, I continue to meet with Karen Powell and Churchill and give them some individualized instruction because they don't have the same schedule as, you know, the regular teachers for PD and everything. And it was interesting that they said that in, Dr. Juanes, your plan is SEL is focused, that's what we just did for the Churchill folks with some SEL, and talk about how we can incorporate those practices into adult learning. So that's good to hear that MYKIP, as you said, is doing that as well. Jedi, the next meeting will be on April 26th. We have continuing to work on our long-range planning alongside with the district and focusing on goal number one, which was to make sure that our students test above, you know, at city and state levels. We had lots of discussions about more equitable measures of assessing achievement. And so to that end, I have invited Stephen Snead to come in at our next meeting, which is on the 26th, to talk to us about that and help us to identify what we would want that tool to have and how we can use it. So we are moving forward on that. And lastly but not least, and it was a good session with the Human Rights Commission, but all the commissions of the city were invited last night to a session about how government runs and Robert's Rules of Order and things like that. So it was a pretty full group of all the commissions across Royal Oak and a good session and I actually ran into somebody that I hadn't seen in 25 years. So that's all I have right now.
Mrs. Patrick?
Thank you. And Dr. Martin and I meet regularly and I know Stephen Snead from Oakland Schools is a consultant that works in research, evaluation and assessment and it's, he runs the full department out at Oakland Schools. And so based on feedback from all of our DEI work, our staff members concerned about this, how equitable the playing field is for all of our students taking these key assessments that, you know, in the past were kind of a line in the sand about who achieved or who didn't. And we're learning a lot more about measuring achievement. And I've worked with Stephen for many years out there at the county and he will be a great asset and a consultant to help us with looking at not only better benchmarks, better assessments to use, and then we also talked about being data literate last night at our long-range planning meeting and he also does a great presentation on that and educating all. So thank you, Dr. Martin. I think that will be a great asset to all of our work and very timely. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Alexander?
I just wondered if you could expand a little bit on, you talked about with the curriculum development for the long-range PD?
Yes.
That you guys are working on. And you mentioned, I think, like four areas. Have those areas been fleshed out? And if so, could you expand on it?
If I said four, forgive me, because there's at least like eight to 10 of those areas that we have flushed out, but the next step is to get the district, the representatives, the teachers from every school onboard. So those will be expanded, added, subtracted, whatever, same, in the same process as the long-range planning. You know, they identified, in that case, four goals, you were right, and then we have run them through several meetings of community members.
Okay. And so then the goals, the goals are like mutually agreed upon goals and then that kind of drives the curriculum development?
Right. So for example, obviously, I can just tell you one goal that we felt that everyone should be competent in is the area of issues around LGBTQ, right? That's a huge title. So what under there should our adults, our teachers, excuse me, be competent in and how can we deliver that?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, if I could, I just wanted to add, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Martin, for taking on this leadership opportunity within our curriculum department. We are very excited about it. It's in the beginning stages, so I know that we talked briefly and planned recently about it. But the thing that we're most excited about is the involvement of the teachers and administrators that they'll have. They're not fully aware of this plan yet. We're just kind of fleshing some things through. But part of what Dr. Martin and that team of DEI leaders from each building, part of what they will do is begin to set the foundation of the expected levels of understanding around the work of diversity, equity and inclusion. We can land on five, we can land on six. We had about 10 on that chart that we looked at the other day. So we're excited about that and then looking forward to how we can incorporate that in our professional development time next year. And the most exciting thing is it'll definitely be teacher leaders also helping facilitate that professional development, but we're going to talk to them. We haven't spoken to them yet. I just, you know, I know sometimes this is recorded, right? So it's out there and we're going to continue to work with those teachers and we're going to communicate some things about them pretty soon here, but we're excited and thank you, Dr. Martin, for your efforts and work in that.
I'm excited too. I think there's going to be several overlaps for people who are, you know, in the PTAs or on Jedi or on these improvement teams. So we're going to have a lot of good input. And again, I'm not the curriculum expert, so they're going to write that.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. We appreciate it. Moving on to 5.2, student representative to the board, Karina.
A few upcoming events that we have at Royal Oak. Most of this information can be found on the weekly newsletter or our Royal Oak website, but just a few that I would like to highlight. There's a newly opened scholarship created by the Royal Oak PTA and the PDF can be found on the weekly newsletter or a hard copy in the Student Service Center. I think that's really important with college and everything coming up. The Senior Annual Honors Convocation is on Tuesday, May 23rd, from 7:00 to 8:30 at Royal Oak Middle School's auditorium. The personal invites will be sent by the end of next week, so if you haven't gotten anything, don't freak out. Prom is coming up and a new nonprofit Sparkle Network is hosting their annual spring closet tour that offers a chance for Royal Oak High School juniors and seniors to receive a pre-prom dress or a chance to get one. Appointments are required. If interested, send an email. And then just some reminders, the state mandated testing just concluded today for ninth through 11th graders. The quarter ended today, so it's really important that if you need to, email your teachers. I think it's very important. Everything can be accessed through MyStar. Finals are coming up quick and the testing schedule can be found on the Royal Oak Schools' website. And then just one last reminder that the Blessings in a Backpack Program is still going on. If you feel like your student qualifies, find the link and fill out the form on the newsletter. In previous meetings moving forward, we've discussed on, me and my partner, to have these tables where we would talk to some students and gather some information on the points of view of what they're thinking. This month, we made our focus on how students feel like in their social situations and how they feel they're supported by staff, because I feel like that's something that people don't really talk about much because it's kind of personal. So we made this Google form, you just had to scan it, everything was anonymous. I mean, just sitting at lunches, our grade distribution was 26% ninth graders, which was a lot higher than I thought. So I mean, I must have really grabbed them in at lunch, I'm not sure. And then it just spread out mostly evenly from there. We got over 200 responses, which isn't the greatest result, but for people who are just going in and out of lunch, it's not horrible. So based on the question, do you feel comfortable in your social setting at ROHS, 87% said yes and 12.9% said no. And then in response to that, as a follow-up, do you feel supported by the staff members at ROHS, 79.8% said yes and 20.2% said no. There's a few specific responses that stood out to us, but a constant in our results was that some students who felt as though they were not supported by a staff member mentioned that it kind of just feels like a hit or miss. And I know this isn't really a comfortable thing to talk about because everybody has their own experiences, but my personal advice as a senior who's been in all types of classes and environments is that mutual respect in this type of environment is the most important. We are at the age where we don't just deserve respect and support. And I know this is, again, kind of uncomfortable, but you really have to just earn it. It's like the oldest saying in the book, but you seriously have to just treat people how you want to be treated, know who you're speaking to and understand that it's the staff's job to teach and also maintain peace. With that said, there are so many resources available to students, but you do have to go out of your way and find them. And I think that it's just hard as like students when you don't feel like you know what's going on. And I mean, for the first two years, like COVID happened for me, I mean, we were kind of just coasting by, but I feel like in this past year and my junior year, I've become a lot more comfortable in my surroundings and I've become a lot closer to staff members, including Ms. Moore and Mr. Gordon over there. You can catch me in their office a lot, but it's not for bad reasons. So I think you just really have to go out of your way to make yourself comfortable. So I think you just really have to go out of your way to make yourself comfortable. And it's not just given to you anymore, and I don't think it should be. I think you have to really work for it. But with these responses in mind, we plan to open the floor to more types of questions to ask students next month to provide an inside look of the Royal Oak High School students. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Oh, Mrs. Alexander?
I was just curious if the survey allowed for people to provide suggestions, or will any future surveys, like for things that if they weren't able to answer yes to feeling positive about something, opportunities for suggestions, I think, might be helpful?
Right. Okay. So I totally agree with that. For this one specifically, it started with just the yes or no question, and if they responded no, you would give your reason why. So we said, are you comfortable in your social situation? And then obviously, some of our responses were just like, I don't know, I just don't feel comfortable. But then other people went into it more. I could read every single one or everything like that, but there, of course, there was a lot of outliers, but I felt like for this, it was most important to just state what was constant. I feel like in the future, we'll definitely change some questions, maybe move forward. And then we might just have one that says, what do you suggest about anything? Filter through it, it's going to take a while, but we, starting now, we're just doing with pretty straightforward answers.
Thank you. I could, oh, Mr. Jaworski?
Like, Karina, you've been here for a couple months now, and you've been in the lunchroom. What did the other students think of your role here? Like, I was asking you, why are you doing this? What's going on?
Honestly, I don't really think a lot of people know, except that sometimes in the hallway, one of my friends stopped me, and she was like, my mom saw you on TV. And I'm like, oh, okay. Because I like, even me, I didn't even realize that that many people watched or cared. But I feel like when I was sitting there, this one was kind of not the best. I think we could get a lot more responses, and I think we could even prep more because at the tables, I'm comfortable with where I am. I'm comfortable just pointing at someone, saying, come here, scan this QR code and fill it out. And that got over 200 responses, so that worked. But I definitely think we could advertise it more and lead up to it, and so they know what they're getting into, and then they can understand like why I'm doing it. But for those of the people who did ask me questions, I said, say what you really think, don't hold back, and then I will tell it for you. And I think that's really what I'm trying to let people know I'm doing.
Perfect. I appreciate it. We talked to Karina when we interviewed her for this position, and this is one of her ideas, and I'm really glad to see that you're doing it, and it seems to be working well.
I appreciate you sharing all that with us. It's really important. And I didn't remember, it kind of piggybacks on Mrs. Alexander's. Do you have a suggestion box? I thought that was one of the things that you talked about. Do you have somewhere that people can just put suggestions in a box?
Right. So we don't have a physical box currently because I feel like, like what I was trying to say was that I felt like it was almost too open-ended for just like the first trial round. And I felt like if we gave, like for this example, we just said yes or no, because the only issue with the suggestion box is that people could say, we want paper towels back in the bathroom. And it's just like, stuff like that, like it's not under our control. So it's just specific things that we wanted to, for now at least, keep contained. And then maybe even just next week, we could say, what do you want us to ask you? Or something like that. And we could start just posting them all over the hallways, and then if you want to fill out a QR code, you can. I feel like for this one, we were just genuinely trying to grab a certain group of people and get their responses.
Can I ask you one more question? Did you do promotion like on the Raven Report or anything like that to?
For this one, we did not. We kind of just focused on how loud I could be when people were walking into lunch. And I definitely think, like I said, advertisement more, we can definitely benefit from that. Hopefully, we can get 200 to maybe 400 next time, so.
200 is great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Mrs. Patrick?
Thank you. Well, I just want to say, I want to encourage you to keep going because I think getting started is the first thing. So the students that participated this time will know why you're there the next time, and then you'll have more to do that. So I applaud you for yelling out and pulling your friends over because sometimes that's what it takes to get them to participate. And I also know that understanding the comments that the students have or even all the suggestions is one step, and then also sharing it with the administrators at the high school for small things. There are things we could do right away with the comments that you received. So I know that's very important to them, that that is also shared there, here at the board level as well, but certainly with the administrators at the high school. And even repeating some of the questions later after some of those strategies have been put in place would be a good measure of if they're working or not and getting student feedback. But thank you for stepping out and doing that. It's exactly what, you know, we had hoped would happen, and I encourage you to just keep it going. It will get better, and it grows. Thank you.
Oh, I, the question I had was really just already stated by you, just the idea that those survey questions do get, you know, put up the line so that things can, you know, changes can be made, because I think that that will also encourage people to respond to the surveys if they see that there can be action or some sort of improvement from their suggestions. So thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item six, Communications. Mrs. Anderson?
We had a few emails this month. I want to apologize in advance on a couple names. Eric Steiner emailed us about busing. Stephanie emailed us about vaping. Ashley Elnikash about a coach. Stacy Wojcikowicz about busing. Stephanie Van Heerit about busing. She sent two emails. Abby Dinsmore about school start times. And Scott and Laura Foster, appreciation for Stephen Wattsman, a Royal Oak High School teacher.
Thank you. Moving on to item seven, Public Comment. If you would like to make a public comment, a person may address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item by completing a note card located inside the boardroom and place the card in the basket prior to the citizen public comment period. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If you need more time, you are offered a second opportunity to address the board at the end of the meeting with an additional three minutes. Please address the board as a whole and not individually. Public comment is not intended for the exchange of dialogue. This is a time for members of the public to express their views. We are paying attention to your comments and appreciate them. Questions that arise from public comment shall be referred to the superintendent or their designee for review, study, and possible future response. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. First, I have Andrew Kolkowski.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself to those of you that I don't know. I was recently appointed to the 44th District Court to serve as District Court Judge. I'll be taking the bench on the 24th of April, finishing up my time at the Michigan Department of State on the 21st. So it'll be a quick turnaround, and then I'll be on the bench in Royal Oak. I'm really excited for the opportunity. I know that the District Court here in Royal Oak has a very special relationship with the schools. Judge Meinike has a wonderful program that's popular with lawyers, with the court staff, and with students and parents alike. So I'm excited for the opportunity to get involved with some of those programs and hopefully expand some others that I think I have some ideas about. So once I get that chance and we get in there, we'll go from there. So thank you for the chance to speak to you today, and I look forward to working with everybody in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Jessica McCarthy.
Excuse my dress, I came from soccer practice. My name's Jessica McCarthy. I'm a mother of two children in Royal Oak. I'm addressing the board about the need for expansion of the latchkey program. So, you know, currently, I have, I'm going to have two children in at Northwood in the fall. We've been waitlisted for the past two years for my first grader. And I guess, you know, it's, so I work as, in primary care, well care, at a pediatric clinic, and I need to give my schedule three to six months out in advance. So it's, we struggled when we had to put our name on the waitlist in May, and then for us to then find out that we didn't get in the waitlist or we didn't get in latchkey. So now, you know, coming up in the fall with the adjustment of having two children in, I'm having to make the decision to cut my hours back because of the fact that I can't be guaranteed to have a latchkey position for both of my kids. You know, my husband has been supportive, and, you know, we don't know for sure, like, if it's sustainable for several years. I've talked with other parents about the inconsistency in getting latchkey. So like, one child got latchkey, had latchkey coverage for one year, and then was not picked the following year. And so I'm just thinking that like optimizing the aftercare latchkey would also help with the crowded times around drop off and pickup and help staggering the arrival times and potentially even like alleviating some of the busing issues that I know a lot of families are worried about. So thank you for letting me speak.
Moving on to item eight, Consent Agenda. Do we have any recommend, any changes to the consent agenda? Okay. Consent, oh, can I have a recommendation, please? Oh, never mind. It's been a long night.
Just to note that, what they are, though?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Items on the consent agenda, 8.1 Personnel Changes, 8.2 Payment of Expenses. Do we have any additions or deletions to the consent agenda? Consent agenda passes as presented. Moving on to item nine, Staff and Student Services, Mr. Walensky.
Thank you, Ms. Van Heetsma. I have something positive to share with you tonight. It's something I've been talking about it for three months now. Item 9.1.1 is on tonight's agenda, is a recommendation for your approval to appoint Jason Taylor to be the next principal of Oakland Elementary effective July 1st, 2023. As you know, because I've been talking about it, we began the process of seeking a new principal for Oakland Elementary when Sam Lynch, who is also here in the audience tonight, announced quite early back in December that he would be retiring at the end of this school year, June 30th. And Sam's been in the role, I believe, 10 years at Oakland, so it's going to be a significant change. So I'll talk just a little bit about the process. After Sam made that announcement that he would be retiring, soon after that, Ms. Fitzpatrick and I, as we do when we seek a new building principal, we started with a meeting with the staff to get their feedback. What would you like? What are some qualities you would like in the next principal? And it's interesting, and you do see patterns. And there was a lot of love for Sam, of course, I'll throw that in. They have enjoyed Sam. We then surveyed, he lets us leave early, he does, lets us do whatever we want, that was thrown in, but. We then surveyed the staff, all staff, because not all of them were there, and the parents, and then just looked for patterns of things they want in the next principal. We then posted the position for two weeks, and we received 55 applicants. And that's an arduous process to go through and kind of screen for what it is we're looking for. We selected 10 initially for a first round of interviews and invited them and interviewed them here in this room all day. And after that day, we narrowed it down to four that we invited back for a second interview. And obviously, Jason was one of those four. We held a second round of interviews, narrowed it down to two, and those two finalists, Jason being one of them, was interviewed here last Monday. And ultimately, Jason was our selection. In the process, those three panels involved, not on all three panels, but one, two, or all three panel, or interviews were two parents, one board member, five teachers, and 10 administrators. So a lot of thought went into this selection. And just a little bit about Jason, and then I'll ask him to come up and say a few things. Jason earned his bachelor's in science and elementary education from Central Michigan University, and he went on later to earn a master of arts in educational leadership from Wayne State University. He's been teaching in Royal Oak since 1997. And if my math is correct, so fall of 97, that's 20, this is his 26th year in Royal Oak. He has taught at Keller Middle School, when it was a middle school, it's no longer, Star Elementary, when it was, when that was an elementary, it's no longer, and Royal Oak Middle School. And for the past 13 years, he's been the MTSS coordinator at Oakland Elementary. So he's very immersed in that school and knows a lot about that school. He's also served as our district math coordinator and math improvement chair since 2012. Couple more things. Couple qualities about Jason. When you get to know him, I've known Jason the whole time I've worked here, you learn that he is a person of patience and kindness and integrity to his core. And I think those are three character traits that, there's nothing more essential to this role than those three character traits. So it's with complete confidence that I and our team recommend Jason Taylor for the position of principal of Oakland Elementary School. Jason, you want to come up and say a few words?
So just as, well, let's clap first of all. Congratulations. So I just want to say that, you know, in Royal Oak schools, we have approximately 30 members of our administrative team. So when we make a change and we're replacing, you know, someone that has led Oakland Elementary School so well for the past several years and following in the footsteps of Sam Lynch, we knew that with Jason working at Oakland, that was going to be a very good thing because he loves the community. And I think that was the quote that was even in the newspaper article, and I know he does. And we also know that the skill set he brings, not only through his own schooling, as Mr. Walensky talked about, but also his leadership, his peers, the work in mathematics, and then working in MTSS, which is at the core of what we do to support all students. For that and many other reasons, we thought it was a great fit. And I will say that the interview process is pretty thorough. I think at one point, we told you there would be no more interviews because it did go on for a bit. But we're very confident, and when our team debriefed and looked at All Things Considered, we knew that Jason Taylor was absolutely the right choice. So I also told him he wouldn't stand up here alone tonight, so I moved from the mic. But I just want to say congratulations, and then with your remarks, if you'd please just talk about who's with you tonight for this, so congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I first want to thank you for that extensive and kind introduction. And also, I want to start out by saying it's an immense honor to have been selected for this position. Oakland's a wonderful place. It's got wonderful staff and wonderful families and wonderful kids, and I just can't imagine spending my days in a better place for the next however many years. So I want to thank the board and Superintendent Fitzpatrick, Mr. Walensky, Ms. Bella, and Dr. Yuanis for this opportunity. I want to thank our team at Oakland without their support and encouragement. I don't know if I'd be standing here tonight, not least of which was Mr. Lynch, who's been a wonderful friend and mentor and counselor throughout the past 10 years. And, you know, his vision of, you know, this transition someday really kind of motivated me to, you know, be the guy for this job, in which I think, you know, I can't thank you enough. So. And also, I would like to thank my wife, Debbie Taylor. She's a science teacher extraordinaire from Royal Oak Middle School. Without her love and encouragement, I don't think I'd be here as well. But just, you know, I just want to express how excited I am for this opportunity in the future for Oakland. I can't wait to work more in depth with the team at Oakland and with families to build those relationships to create wonderful futures for our little road runners. So thank you very much.
Resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education affirms the hiring of Jason Taylor and the appointment of him to the position of Oakland Elementary School Principal effective July 1st, 2023.
I just want to say congratulations.
I just want to say congratulations. I can't say welcome because you've been here, but I think it's a great appointment and I'm really happy. I also want to say thank you to Mr. Lynch, who's been a bedrock in that community, and you will be missed, so thank you.
And I'd just like to second what Mrs. Anderson said. I, you know, it's going to be hard to see Mr. Lynch gone, but what a great fit and such a supporter of Oakland all these years of the staff and the students and the families. Just seems like a logical conclusion to me, but that's my opinion. So, thank you. May we have a vote, Mrs. Anderson?
Yes, I will vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Chahorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Thank you very much. So certainly, a number of celebrations tonight. I will say too, that just in the months to come, now that it's April and Mr. Taylor is appointed, we will work over the next several months to transition at Oakland. There's still work to do to do that, to bring him on board fully and work with Mr. Lynch to do that. And then also, we will need to post his current responsibilities that will be passed along. And what's nice about this, I think too, and Jason and I have had this conversation, is just, we've all come up through our system as teachers and leaders and eventually as administrators, and it's just nice to recognize those that raise their hand and want to do that work. It's not easy work, but it certainly is fulfilling, and we all do that with our hearts in the right place. And so that MTS coordinator in that position to support our students is very important, and so we want to make sure all those roles are filled, so. Couple things too, just to can talk further down the board's agendas in the coming months, we have more folks to recognize. So at the next meeting in May, we will be inviting our teachers of the year, so three teachers, one from each of our elementary, middle, and high school level, who will be honored between now and then. We will also attend a ceremony and a celebration out at Oakland Schools, which honors all of the teachers of the year across Oakland County and in the ISD from all the 28 districts. And we also had a support person of the year nominated for our district that went out to the process at Oakland Schools. We'll hear more about that, and we'll also invite them to the May meeting. Also, last month, we honored our folks that received the Oakland Schools Above and Beyond Award, which is, was given to teachers who went above and beyond to take professional development, again, to support students with disabilities and special needs in our district, and they were recognized. And I just want to make sure that we read all of their names, and it was an article in our dispatch as well, so you can read more. Teresa Brewer-Rawlins, Rachel Champagne, Kristen Gembis, Armin Gulian, Courtney Hammerly, Megan McCaffrey, Lindsay Poterak, Leon Robinson, and Kelly Stanessa were all honored. They didn't all make it to the meeting last month, but I wanted to make sure that they were all also recognized. And in recognition, I think our school librarians were also honored nationally early on in the month. A very special holiday to honor those that serve our young people so well through local school libraries and promote literacy and the love of books. And we have people in within our district that do that work every day with our young students, creating readers out of all of them. We want to make sure that they were given recognition, as well as our paraprofessionals, who also nationally were honored on April 3rd, providing all of that support and service to our most needy students. Sometimes the best friend, the right hand and the left hand to assist our students to become independent in the school environment, but have that adult support throughout their day. And so we just want to do, recognize them as well. And I believe that is it for me tonight.
Thank you very much. Item 9.3 Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Yuanis?
Thank you, Mrs. Van Heitzma. I do have some updates, of course. I did want to just again congratulate Mr. Taylor on making it through this process, and also thank Mr. Lynch for all his years of service. I know for sure that when Mr. Lynch and I were hired about nine or 10 years ago, we did not have to go through that intensive interview process to become the principal at Adams or Oakland. So we definitely have improved and increased the steps we put potential candidates through, so I just want to commend him for that process. And I also remember Mr. Walensky shared with me the first submission from the survey, was I think from Mr. Lynch, about the next principal being notably better than Mr. Lynch. Remember, I think you submitted that?
I believe not.
Yes, yeah, so I think that was the first submission on the survey, as someone noticeably better. But anyways, thank you both, and I'm happy to have Jason on our team. Couple of quick updates. I do want to also turn our attention to the screen, because again, I'm always excited to talk about our insight into instruction and curriculum video series that we have. All right, and then this month, our focus is flexible seating and learning spaces.
Our flexible learning environment offers our students the opportunity to showcase agency in their own learning environment. It gives them choice over their where they want to sit for the day. It gives them choice over what kind of seating option they want for the day, whether it's a chair, a stool, a mushroom seat, a wobble seat, or a seat on the floor.
My flexible learning environment, well, as you know, we have new furniture this year at the middle school, and it's great because there are wheels on everything, and you can put brakes on them if you need to have them stationary, but I can always move them where I need to if I'm making flexible groups, if we're doing group work or partner activities. I also love the standing desks and the high tables. Those are for kids who really need to move, so they can stand as they work, they can roll the high table to a different location to focus, and the high tables are just a great way of giving the option of sitting in the high chair or standing at the table. So the students love it, and I do too, because there's so many different configurations and ways in which they can work together.
I am really thrilled to have a learning environment that is kind of my ideal that I've been wanting for years. We had to sort of make do with big clunky tables before and chairs that were not flexible. So I'm really happy to have a room that allows me to move quickly from centers to straightforward desks to having like a whole circle, and all of that can happen in really quick ways, and so I can have multiple seating arrangements in any given class period. What I like to do is I have little centers, so students are in sort of pods of between four to six students, because regularly through my instruction, we'll do an activity, I'll say turn and talk to their elbow partner or talk to your table. So that's like, that's the main way that we're seated. But it also is, offers like the safety and a lot of physical space for movement. We can quickly move into a circle without disrupting those pods. It goes around the center table, so I can have whole class discussion and then quickly move into these pods or small group tables that are actually individual tables that can be split in different ways.
My students all have high sensory needs because I teach autistic students, and so we have to be very flexible in our classroom. Because of their sensory needs and their processing, a lot of times, they aren't able to sit still in a chair, in a standard desk. So we use all of our flexible seating, and I actually have additional types of seating that I've implemented in addition to what the district's purchased. So for example, during circle time, I will tell my kids, it's time to come to the carpet, get something that you're going to be feeling comfortable to sit on and be able to sit on at the carpet. So a lot of our lessons actually take place on the floor, at different tables or stations. My kids all do have standard desks, but they almost never sit at them.
With the furniture, I'm able to do a lot more collaborative assignments, let students kind of take the lead with activities by arranging them into groups. It also makes it easy to move the furniture around with everything having wheels. Students are able to rearrange whenever we do jigsaws or whenever we do Socratic seminars. It's also helpful for students who may need a little bit of kind of a fidget for the chairs that kind of swivel, so it kind of helps students stay on task as well.
I think the new furniture and technology has really helped me collaborate with others better. I think the way that you can move the furniture around and really just like, especially with like the moving desks, like you can, you can find new ways to collaborate with people that like I never could before with desks just in rows.
I think just like being able to have different options of where you sit really helps me focus, and having like different types of tables in groups helps me collaborate with other people better.
With our new setup, what I was trying to achieve voice utmost is just that, that agency within the students. I come in and I set it up as just a draft, and then when they come in and they see what it is and they voice their own choice, then we're able to change it together as a class. So I want to set that up for them to have their own agency and for them, for us to work together as a classroom family to set it up so that we can be successful all year long and follow our essential agreement number six, which is to, of course, have fun while
It was a nice ending there. It took us to another, another point. But as you can see, the flexible seating and learning spaces, a wonderful opportunity for our kids and students to engage. We talked throughout the long range planning process about learning communities and learning environments that are both engaging and flexible, and we really feel like we have hit the mark there with our flexible seating across our K-12 classrooms. A couple of other quick updates. I want to take a moment to thank our staff at the middle school and the high school. I was able to attend two events that I think are pretty phenomenal, that I was not aware of before I got into this role. At the middle school, they had a Class of 2030 open house essentially, where they invited all of the current fifth grade students and families to spend some time at the middle school, learn more about some of the programs and offerings that we have at the middle school level. The administrators and teachers did a wonderful job being available for all of the current fifth graders and the future incoming sixth grade students at ROMs. It really showed me that it's a wonderful welcoming environment, and it was good to have that opportunity. So I want to just thank the staff at the middle school for organizing that. And then I believe the very next day, we had a chance to witness what takes place at the high school, so I want to also thank the high school staff and administrators. What was taking place there really was their version of the open house for the current eighth graders, for the incoming ninth graders. They got an opportunity to come in again, talk to some students, to see some teachers as far as how their classrooms were set up and some programs and offerings that we have at the high school. Wonderful opportunity for our students who completed their personal projects to be on display for all of our current eighth graders and incoming ninth graders to get a better idea of some of the components that we believe are firm parts of our foundation here in Royal Oak. So thank you to both the high school and middle school staff for taking the time to put those two wonderful events on. And the very last update is, we sent out flyers regarding summer learning opportunities at all levels, elementary, middle school, and high school. We are very hopeful and planning on having an April 15 registration date as far as when we're going to open that up. At the elementary level, we're going to be June 26th to July 13th. Classes are Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 11:30. We focus on math ELA, and then we always have given opportunities for teachers to submit ideas for some other types of courses that they would like to teach at the elementary level. Middle school, we're going to follow a similar track as far as Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 11:30. Two sessions, first session for both elementary and middle school is June 26th to July 13th. Second session for both elementary and middle school is July 17th to August 4th, again, Monday through Thursday, no classes on Friday or July 3rd and 4th. Our high school offerings are a little bit different, because we're going to focus on credit recovery, AM session for 8:00 to 11:30, and then a PM session 12:00 to 3:00. But again, flyers have been posted. Thank you to Mrs. Murphy for submitting those out there on social media and having those things ready for us, and we're excited to open up registration here in a few days. Last thing I'd like to bring everyone's attention to is item 9.3.1, the air phone, card, I'm sorry, the air phone and card access panels, and then 9.3.2, the security camera purchases, installation, and licensing. We initially spoke about this with Jeff Sharp at the March Finance and Facilities meeting, and then at our most recent April Finance and Facilities meeting, we were finally ready to move forward with that, so I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention for us to take a quick look at.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Yuanis? Then 9.3.1, air phone and card access panels, can I have a recommendation, please? Mr. Chahorsky?
Resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent to finalize the purchase of card access panels and video secure phone, AI phones, with associated installation to IROK systems in the amount of $36,187.50.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please? Mrs. Alexander? Mrs. Anderson? Does anybody have any questions? Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Chahorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. And as Dr. Yuanis said, we discussed this at finance and facilities, so appreciate the thorough explanation of all of that, so thank you. Moving on to item 9.3.2, security camera purchases, installation, and licensing recommendation. Mrs. Cook?
Resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent to finalize the purchase from CBTS, the following items, security camera purchase, installation, and licensing in the amount of up to $190,000. The competitive bid process has been achieved utilizing the following process, Oakland County reciprocal pricing bid.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Mrs. Anderson? Any discussion? Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Thank you. And this was discussed at our finance and facility meeting, but I just wanted to point out that for this item in particular, the additional security cameras being added to interior and exterior spaces of all of our schools and buildings, which currently have cameras, many of these suggestions came from the security audit that was performed. We have added some of them, and this purchase does finish out those recommendations across the district, which is supplemental to the system that we have. So we're appreciative of the support and also know that it does help secure our facilities, both during the school day as well as after hours and weekends. So this is a very important recommendation this evening.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Chahorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to 9.4, finance and facilities. Mrs. Bella?
Good evening. I have two multi-part resolutions for you this evening. 9.4.1, our lease agreements. These are continuations of leases that we have each year with some of these support organizations for our school district, the Royal Oak Youth Assistance, the Royal Oak Community Coalition, the South Oakland YMCA After School Program that we hold at Royal Oak Middle School, the City of Royal Oak ABE Parking Lot Use Agreement that occurs during the Labor Day weekend, and then finally, the Grant Park Lease. Once again, all of these are one-year leases, and they were discussed at Finance and Facilities last month. Do you have any questions about those? Did you want me to continue with the other one, or do you want to vote on this one first?
We'll vote on these, if that's okay.
Okay.
Item 9.4.1.1, Royal Oak Youth Assistance, may I have a recommendation, please? Mrs. Haynes?
Resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby approve the lease agreement with Royal Oak Youth Assistance.
Can I have a second? Mrs. Alexander? Any discussion? Mr. Chahorsky?
Do you have a question? I'm wondering why are there no amounts on any of these lease motions?
The leases were attached in board books, and then the lease agreement outlines the amount that's within that lease each year. So for example, Royal Oak Youth Assistance, the lease is for $1.
So I'm wondering if that amount does need to be in the motion we're making?
Either mentioned or as presented within the lease.
So then I move to amend that to say as presented? If agreeable to the motion maker?
Yes, yes, okay. Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Yes, to that, Mr. Chahorsky, then I would suggest that it's as presented, assume Yes, to that, Mr. Johorsky, then I would suggest that it's as presented, assumed for all 9.4.1.1 through 9.4.1.5. So every one of the leases, we'll add it to everyone.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Did we have a second? Yeah, Mrs. Cook, thank you. All right. Can we have a roll call, please? Mrs. Anderson?
Trustee Johorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 9.4.1.2, Royal Oak Community Coalition, may I have a recommendation? Mrs. Alexander?
Resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby approves the lease agreement with the Royal Oak Community Coalition as presented in the lease agreement.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Mrs. Anderson? Any discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Johorsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 9.4.1.3, South Oakland YMCA After School Program at ROMs. Can I have a recommendation? Mrs. Haynes?
Resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby approves the lease agreement with the South Oakland YMCA After School Program at Royal Oak Middle School as presented in the lease agreement.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Mrs. Cook? Any discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Turn on my mic. I will vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Johorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. 9.4.1.4, City of Royal Oak Arts Beats and Eats Parking Lot Use Agreement. Can I have a recommendation? Mrs. Haynes?
Resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby authorize the superintendent to finalize and sign the lease agreement with the City of Royal Oak for Arts, Beats, and Eats Parking Lot Use as presented in the lease agreement.
Can I have a second? Mrs. Anderson? Any discussion?
Yes, actually on this one, I would like a little more detail so the community knows what it's all about.
Sure. So the City of Royal Oak rents parking lots at Royal Oak High School, Royal Oak Middle School, and Keller Elementary isn't overflowed, they don't often use that one, from Friday morning of Labor Day weekend until 6:00 AM Monday morning of Labor Day weekend, or I'm sorry, Tuesday morning, for the use of Arts, Beats, and Eats. And they rent those parking lot spaces for the cost of $7,500. We do as a district have the opportunity to use those spaces ourself or to man those. And we have, there is a date spelled out in August in that lease agreement that we could do that ourselves in lieu of the $7,500 from the city.
And there would be, with school starting before, there's going to be no interference with any school activity?
Absolutely, yeah, right. And that is a discussion that we have with the city each year. We make sure that we take care of that, that, and every year we have not had a problem. Obviously, we've started after Labor Day for the last several years, that that, those parking lots are in condition first thing Tuesday morning for our students and staff to come back into the buildings.
Thank you.
I did see that language in the agreement about not interfering with schools, so I did actually look for that. Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Johorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So the motion carries. Thank you.
9.4.1.5, Grant Park Lease. Can I have a recommendation? Mrs. Haynes?
Resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby approve the lease agreement with the City of Royal Oak for the use of Grant Park through June 30, 2024 as presented in the lease agreement.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Mrs. Alexander? Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Johorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Are you going to speak to this one?
I am. So 9.4.2, our three-year district-wide contracts for painting, fencing, concrete, and mulch. These are contracts that we've held or have held, not necessarily with these particular contractors, for several years. We find this to be a desire to have these in place. We have state limits on the amount of money we can spend on contracting. This way, we get per-unit pricing. We have the ability, if we have some concrete work that we suddenly have to be done, to be able to reach right out to that contractor and have that done and have our pricing set and approved by the Board of Education. We have found this to be very beneficial even around the bond and sinking fund projects that we have going on in addition to this. So for example, we decided to put in some additional concrete at Royal Oak Middle School right before school started last year, leading up to that brand-new track that made that more accessible, and we were able to reach out to that, that concrete contractor pretty quickly. So that's just kind of an example of why we go about that. In addition, so to the four contracts that I'm mentioning here, part of the resolution also is for fencing in the amount of $64,104 plus 10% for contingency, specific around a fencing project bid package we put together. We had a desire to fence along the north side of Adams Elementary so that we are completing the loop on that playground, the west side and north side of Upton Elementary, and then some additional, or I'm sorry, some replacement fencing at Royal Oak Middle School. So that resolution includes the three-year bids on the four different contractors and then that additional fencing award that has been packaged specifically for the summer. Are there any questions? And before you ask, we might as well do it, there has been no updates on the state school aid budget. So I just thought I'd throw that in there so we don't forget. I know. I know. Trust me. We usually have the Senate and the House recommendations by spring break. We're already three weeks past spring break, so I hope to have something soon for you. And when I do, if it's before the next board meeting, I'll certainly make sure we include that in the Friday notes.
Thank you. Yes, we remain optimistic. So may I have a recommendation, please? Mrs. Haynes?
Resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to finalize and sign a contract with the following vendors per the unit pricing as noted in the attached bid tabulation sheets. The pricing and contracts are district-wide for three years. MJ Chisholm Construction for Concrete, escalation of 8% in 2024 and 2025. Kimberly Fence for Fencing, escalation as shown in the bid tab. Seven Brothers Painting for Painting, escalation as shown in the bid tab. Superior Ground Cover, Ink for Mulch, escalation as shown in the bid tab. Be it further resolved that the superintendent finalize and sign a contract in the amount of $64,104 for the fencing work at Upton Elementary, Adams Elementary, Royal Oak Middle School with a 10% contingency to address any unforeseen conditions.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mrs. Alexander? Any further discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Johorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, we do discuss these as well at Finance and Facilities meeting last week. So, thank you.
Mrs. Van Heitzma, can I just add to that?
Mrs. Anderson?
So just, I'll do my, a little PSA for all these, our committees in our district. In the Finance and Facilities, as you see, many things are discussed at that meeting. Many explanations are offered. I encourage everyone to join our committees. And just so everybody knows, if you want to join Finance and Facilities, the next meeting is actually May 3, which is a day earlier than usual because the teachers of the year out at Oakland Schools will be on the regular night, but it's usually the first Thursday of every month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 10, public, our second public comment, same rules apply, seeing none? Okay, thank you. Item 11, boards, board comments and liaison report. Are there any comments? Mrs. Haynes?
I just have one. It's not on here, that May 23 is the last day of school for our seniors. And being that I have one, it will be a joyous day in our house, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Johorsky?
I have a couple Keller updates. Keller's joining the world of composting, which is already happening at Oak Ridge. They're really super excited, they're starting slowly obviously, but they say by the end of the school year that their milk cartons, their trays, and food is all going to be composted through their cafeteria. And also their talent show is next Friday, the 21st of April at 6:00 PM.
Anybody else? I know I was at Oak Ridge's PTA meeting and we were able to have the student senators there again, do a little presentation and an update, so it's kind of become a new thing. So they do a monthly report, which is very nice to hear what the students are engaged in as well at the elementary level. So I'm grateful and appreciative of them for that. Just a shameless plug for the Royal Oak Schools Foundation Annual Golf Outing coming up on June 26. It's at Metamora Country Club. I think one year we had post-storm, last year might have been gusting winds, so we're eternally optimistic for good weather. So we'll just leave it at that. But so I'm grateful for that. And so many events coming up for the end of the school year and open to the community member, concerts, I always encourage, talent shows, plays, other activities that the, that are happening at the schools. Just a wonderful way to see our, I call it our kids in action, so please take advantage of those opportunities. And moving on to item 12, closed session review with written opinion of legal counsel. May I have a recommendation, please? Mrs. Haynes?
Resolve that the Oakland, God, Oakland. Resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education adjourns to a closed session for the purpose of discussing written opinion of legal counsel as is permissible under the Open Meetings Act 15.268, Section 8, Subsection H.
Thank you. May I have a second? Mrs. Cook? May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Johorsky?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We will go into closed session now and we will move into Conference Room A so as not to kick anybody out. All right, we're, we will reconvene out of closed session. Item 13, settlement agreement. May I have a recommendation, please? Mrs. Cook?
Be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the settlement agreement as presented in the board packet.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please? Mrs. Haynes? Any discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Johorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
The motion carries.
And that takes us to item 14, adjournment. We are adjourned. Thank you.